Well, hello everyone. Welcome to the September 28th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Today is a special ceremonial event for the Planning Commission's 100-year anniversary. I will call the meeting to order now at 1:05 PM. And Mrs. Barza, can we please have a roll call?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I'll go ahead and take a roll call. Chair Bonderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Bauckey.
Here.
Commissioner Boss.
Present.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Present.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
And Commissioner Wardlow and Wiskel are absent. Thank you, back to you.
Thank you. And before we begin, I just want to share a little bit with you all here in chambers with us today, the order on how we're going to proceed. It doesn't directly follow the lovely program that we have in the back. So if you are interested in a little keepsake, grab one of those. Staff did a beautiful job. I want to mention that we do welcome public comment today. So if you are in the room and would like to speak up at the podium, please just remember that this is a meeting. It's not a formal hearing. It's a special event, and we'd like to keep your comments today focused on the 100-year anniversary celebration. So items that are not on the agenda or not on the program, we'd like you to keep them for another time. So without further ado, I would like to welcome our city planner and our Planning Commission liaison, Ms. Allison de Busk. As always, she's here with us to open our PC 100-year commemoration item. So Ms. de Busk, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. So yes, today is an amazing milestone in the history of the city. It's the 100th anniversary of the Planning Commission. On this date, exactly 100 years ago, the first Planning Commission meeting was held in the Arlington Hotel, and that's because City Hall was under construction at that time. A hundred years ago, our council and visionary leaders recognized the importance of preserving Santa Barbara's natural beauty and enhancing the quality of life for residents. Through the years, countless dedicated individuals have served on the commission, devoting their time and expertise to shape the city. I've personally been involved with the Planning Commission in one way or another for almost 20 years, and I've seen that hard work and dedication firsthand. There may be trends in the types of development applications that the Planning Commission reviews on a weekly basis, but most of the key issues that are dealt with are the same. We talk about traffic, parking, housing, neighbors, air quality, and water, water quality, as well as lack of water. The Planning Commission has not only protected our environment, but it has also championed inclusivity, accessibility, and equity to ensure that every resident has a stake in the future of our city. Through its dedication, we have seen the protection of our coastline and the promotion of sustainable living. As you all know, the work of the Planning Commission is never complete. It's an ongoing commitment to balance growth with preservation, progress with tradition, and the needs of today with the aspirations of tomorrow. We owe a debt of gratitude to the countless individuals who have served on the commission, the city staff who support their work, and the citizens who have actively participated in Planning Commission meetings and the planning process. So thank you all. Your dedication has made the city what it is today, and your legacy will continue to shape the future. Here's to the next 100 years of progress, preservation, and prosperity. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Mayor Randy Rouse.
Thank you, Mr. Busk. Appreciate that. You know, Planning Commission is our most critical of commissions that we have. You're a direct extension of the City Council. Your task at helping people navigate policy, helping people navigate what our city should be like and what it looks like in the future is important. So your decorum and professionalism on the dais gives legitimacy and gives confidence to those people who do go through our process. We're not a stop sign. This is, in fact, a conduit to how our future is going to look in Santa Barbara. So we appreciate your effort. We appreciate the efforts of all Planning Commissioners that have gone before you. And once again, this is a critical part and a direct extension of your council. So with that being said, I'll get into the whereas part. The City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission, upon its 100th milestone anniversary, whereas the first Santa Barbara Planning Commission was held on September 28th, 1923, during which Planning Consultant Charles Chaney laid out a plan that included developing a comprehensive zoning ordinance, a parks and school playgrounds program, a major traffic street plan, and improving the city's architecture and aesthetics. And whereas the Santa Barbara Planning Commission was among the first Planning Commissions in the nation, and whereas for the past century, appointed Planning Commissioners have conscientiously guided the physical development of the city in accordance with the city charter, offering the City Council considered input on a variety of matters, including zoning, building, and land use proposals, conservation issues, modifications, development plans, and zoning ordinance amendments. And whereas, on this auspicious occasion, the City Council and the City of Santa Barbara thank all current and former Planning Commissioners for diligently serving as faithful stewards of the local area with passion, foresight, and a deep motivation to protect and improve upon our beloved city for the enjoyment of generations to come. Now therefore, I, Randy Rouse, by virtue of authority invested in me as mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, do hereby congratulate the City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission on its milestone 100th anniversary. Well done.
Next, we'll have Ms. de Busk set up and introduce our video presentation.
Thank you. Yes, we have a video presentation, and first, I would like to thank City TV staff for putting this together.
In the early 1920s, Santa Barbara was a town coming into its own. The completion of Mission Tunnel to the New Gibraltar Reservoir had relieved water shortages, and the population had tripled in the previous 20 years to nearly 20,000 people. But this rapid growth didn't happen without consequences.
Before the end of the 19th century, cities generally grew in a very haphazard way, every which way. And the end result was often congestion, dark and unsanitary tenement buildings, people crammed together.
To counter the ills of unrestricted growth, at the turn of the century, a grassroots movement began to build across the country.
The city beautiful movement began in the late 1800s with the aim of creating cities that were just more livable and attractive.
Santa Barbara had a strong city beautiful movement, led by influential community members like Bernard Hoffman and Pearl Chase. They wanted the city to take greater control of the planning and development process to create a city distinct from its sprawling Southern California neighbors. Responding to the growing outcry, in 1915, the California Legislature passed a law authorizing cities to create Planning Commissions, which in turn would be tasked with creating general plans and some lofty goals.
The legislation said that this plan shall be made with the general purpose of guiding and accomplishing a coordinated and harmonious development of the municipality, which will best promote the amenities of life, health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, and general welfare. It was also to provide for the improvement and control of architecture. It was a very impressive list of goals to accomplish through urban planning. I doubt if the Planning Commission, over the years, has had much effect on morals.
In 1923, City Council adopted an ordinance creating a City Planning Commission, one of the first in California. The charter gave the Planning Commission the power to prepare and adopt a comprehensive plan for the physical development of the city and to regulate the subdivision of land.
The Planning Commission directs and manages both the growth and development of the city, and they do that through the adoption of a general plan, zoning codes, and the review and approval of development plans.
Well, the Planning Commission takes black letter law and translates it onto the ground, can render that black letter law more compatible with neighborhoods, and Planning Commission can tailor projects to a specific site and a specific need.
As fate would have it, Santa Barbara's Planning Commission would be afforded an unprecedented opportunity to realize its vision for development due to the 1925 earthquake. After much of downtown was destroyed, the Planning Commission worked with the Plans and Planting Committee to establish Spanish colonial revival as the preferred architectural style for new construction. One of the most powerful tools a Planning Commission has is zoning.
The zoning ordinance sets the standards for what can be built or what kinds of uses can occur on property around the city.
Industrial, manufacturing, residential, commercial, offices, uses, open space, parks, so on. So we have our industrial uses between the railroad and the freeway, for example.
In its first 100 years, the Planning Commission has had numerous opportunities to put its imprint on Santa Barbara.
The original general plan in 1964, the Planning Commission recommended changing State Street from essentially four lanes of traffic and parking, narrowing that down into a pedestrian wall and creating a parking district. That was a very successful move in the general plan that the Planning Commission spearheaded that led to, if you will, retail revitalization of downtown. Planning Commission initiated specific plans back in early 1980s. That led to the development of the expansion here of Chase Palm Park and what today is the Hilton. They also did a specific plan which pushed through Hitchcock and Hope Avenues to create the auto dealerships, providing more retail sales to support basic city services. They've also gone up here on Montecito Street and did, if you will, a specific plan to allow intense affordable housing at one point across from Casa de la Raza.
And while the issues and projects the Planning Commission has seen over the last century have evolved, some challenges have persisted.
You can go back into old news press articles back at the beginning of the 20th century, so the early 1900s, talking about housing availability and housing affordability. It's an ongoing thing. It's been a problem for a long time, as well as too many people, not enough people, too much traffic, you know, all of those related things. Water supply has always been an issue, will remain an ongoing issue.
Whether it's tackling old issues or new ones, the Planning Commission serves a critical role in Santa Barbara.
The ideal is that when council gets a project, it has been, the full dialogue has occurred at the Planning Commission level, and that brings together developer, it brings together citizens, neighbors, and obviously tries to sort out the problems that inevitably occur when change is proposed.
I believe that the function of the Planning Commission, as well as any other board or commission in our community, also is to foster a forum where the public has the opportunity to come out and share their feelings, their opinions, ask pertinent questions, and to get those questions addressed to the best of our ability as we ask the questions that serve our public and make sure that we are guided by the thoughts, the feelings, the opinions of the greater community.
And so after 100 years, we appreciate and honor the commitment and work of the hundreds of Planning Commissioners and staff that have served this community so well.
Just look around. You know, the Planning Commission has had a significant role in making Santa Barbara what it is today.
And we're truly here to serve the public. And if the public can entrust that responsibility in us, then it's our responsibility to give back and to demonstrate that every time we sit on this dais, that we are doing the best work that we can possibly do, that we're coming with the most fair, ethical approach, and that we're conducting ourselves to the highest standard that's set for each one of us by our city.
And it is a special place, and we want to keep it that way, to have it grow, but in a way that serves the needs and desires of the citizens of Santa Barbara.
And next on today's program is a presentation from Commissioner Sheila Lodge.
Thank you. I just want to add a couple of things to what was said, what I described in the state legislation that Planning Commission was to achieve. And under architectural design, and this is in the state legislation, which was drafted by Charles H. Chaney, who was at the first meeting of the first Planning Commission and who presented this plan that was mentioned in the proclamation for what he was going to do for Santa Barbara, you know, plans for parks, for schools, for streets, and what kind of development would go. And he was a man who was an architecture grad of UC Berkeley in 1905, and included, I just noticed this morning, in that was not only the improvement and control of architecture, it included what we are challenged with all the time, the ABR and HLC. It is height and essentially size, bulk, and scale. So it goes all the way back to 1915. These things are important and are to be taken into consideration in development. Mr. Chaney, well, one other thing I wanted to say, the first meeting was on September 28th. By the third meeting, the Planning Commission had approved an ordinance which banned all oil development in the City of Santa Barbara. That's by the third meeting. And by the end of the year, in December, the City Council had adopted it. Now, one of the things that Mr. Chaney and the Olmstead brothers, and the Olmstead brothers were the sons of the famous Frederick Law Olmstead of Central Park in New York and many other major city parks, and they were involved as well. And interestingly, the Chamber of Commerce helped pay Mr. Chaney's fees and probably the Olmsteds. And it's possible that Mrs. Hoffman, who inherited a great deal of money when her parents died, helped pay for some of these services as well. And they were the ones that restored Casa de la Guerra and built El Paseo. And Bernard Hoffman was the one who suggested what became the first ABR, Architectural Board of Review, in the country. So anyway, included in the first plans that Mr. Chaney and the Olmstead brothers presented a year after that was a plan for a bird refuge, where it is now, and for a roundabout at the corner of Los Padres and East Cabrera Boulevard. It took only almost 100 years in this case, but in May 2018, the Planning Commission at last approved its construction. Ms. de Busk, do you happen to know where it is? I sent an email to staff to ask where that project is in terms of construction. Do you happen to know?
Offhand, I don't.
Okay. Anyway, things seem to move a little more slowly now. Thank you.
And thank you. It's always amazing that we learn something new from Commissioner Lodge every single hearing, and it's so amazing to have someone who has this much knowledge still remaining here, serving our community after all these years. It's a privilege to work with you. So that now takes us to comments from members of the public pertaining to our special commemorative item only. If you are here in the room or online and would like to speak on this item today, and you haven't done so yet, please grab a speaker slip in the back of the room and bring it up to Ms. de Busk. Immediately following comments from the public, if there are any. I'd like to also welcome any past Planning Commissioners who are with us today to come up to the podium and speak as well. Again, just follow the same format and grab a speaker slip so we know you're interested, so we don't just randomly call you and put you on the spot. That would be fun. And in the meantime, I just want to take a moment myself to welcome the current and returning Planning Commissioners and the staff, both past and present, who are in the room here today, as we acknowledge the 100-year anniversary of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was created by ordinance 1170 on August 27, 2023, and held its first meeting 100 years ago today on September 28th, 1923. In the 10 decades that have followed, many have sat in these chairs and have contributed to the legacy that makes our community of Santa Barbara so incredibly unique. I would like to take a moment and also thank the people who make these hearings possible, the ones that we don't see behind the scenes, such as the incredible staff members, both Janet and Chris, who put together the video, who spend tireless hours making sure our mics work and our technology works and the air runs and all the other things that happen that most of us don't even realize we need to be able to run these hearings. Also, I want to take a moment to thank Ms. de Busk, who has served as long as I've been here, she's the only liaison that I know, and I've heard only positive things from people who've served before me. They look at you as their favorite and most wonderful, most professional liaison that they've experienced. And I just want to extend a heartfelt thank you from all of us. We can't do this job without you. You literally set everything up every week to make sure that we function properly on the dais. Thank you, Ms. de Busk. And although we have had a few stand-ins over the time that I have served on the commission, Ms. Ostringer has been the only city attorney that has set up here during my short tenure and has the same quite well-regarded reputation of being a city attorney that we can look towards, we can trust, that we know, that we can always depend on. Of course, as I said, there are stand-ins in moments where she may not be with us, and we want to thank them as well. So Mr. Henchke, Mr. Duymus, thank you for helping us do our job here on the dais to the best of our ability and guiding us with so much of your wisdom, doing it so kindly, although we are sometimes a little concerned when their lights go on. But, you know, they keep us in line as we need to be kept. Thank you to our staff that puts together our staff reports, that do the diligence behind the work that comes before us, that supports the applicant through the process. And most importantly, thank you to the public that entrusts us with this job and comes before us, and we want to make sure that they know that we hear them, that we acknowledge their concerns, and that we continue to encourage their participation. We could not be here without our community. So at this time, I'd like to return to public comment. Do we have any public commenters who would like to speak today, Mrs. Barza?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I do have a few speaker slips already. So first up, I'd like to call Aljali Linville to the podium, please. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Aljali Linville. I'm a field representative for the office of Assembly Member Greg Hart, who was once a Planning Commissioner, I was told, like yourself. We are very honored to be here today, and we would like to present a certificate of recognition for your 100 years of dedicated service. So I'm going to read. Santa Barbara Planning Commission is commended for 100 years of dedicated service to the City of Santa Barbara. Throughout a century of dedicated service, the Planning Commission has played an integral role in shaping the prosperous future of our community. Your unwavering commitment to urban development, preservation, and sustainable growth has improved the quality of life for generations to come. As we celebrate this remarkable milestone, we acknowledge the commission's profound impact on our society and express our heartfelt gratitude for a century of exemplary service in planning and shaping our collective future. Our community looks forward to your continued contributions for the next century and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here with us today. We appreciate your comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Deborah Schwartz.
Do you have any other public comment? We'll have Commissioners go after.
I don't have any other ones except for Ms. Schwartz and Mr. Campanello, so if you want to roll into that.
All right. Well, you're up.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Schwartz, and I'm so pleased to be here today for the 100th anniversary of the City Planning Commission. In 2009, while I was serving on a County of Santa Barbara commission, a City of Santa Barbara elected official contacted me with a request to apply for the City Planning Commission. This was not even on my radar. I always had the impression that only the most knowledgeable in land use policy and planning could be considered. I was steeped in regulatory policy, but not land use. However, after meeting individually with some City Council members who urged me to apply, I did just that. When I began serving in January of 2010, the very first task was to begin reading the massive draft 20-year general plan update, including the eight elements plus the appendices, which we ultimately advanced to the City Council in 2011. Candidly, in tackling the general plan update, I thought my brain was going to melt. Fortunately, then, and throughout the 12 years I served on the commission, I had some supportive colleagues who helped with advice and skills they had learned, how to navigate dense technical documents, and also how to read architectural plans. My eternal gratitude goes to Bruce Bartlett for tutoring me on plans, may he rest in peace. Seeking out and learning from supportive, experienced colleagues is essential for all Commissioners because the learning curve is indeed steep, no matter one's professional background. There were fun times and trying times. I was chair three years, the last two during the COVID-19 pandemic, using GoToWebinar and then Zoom to conduct hearings. We persevered, and I'm so proud to say the Planning Commission does just that, with unwavering support provided by Ms. de Busk from planning and Ms. Ostringer from legal. In closing, and as Chair Bonderson also expressed, it has been a great honor and unparalleled education for me to have served as a community representative and steward of city policies and plans. I will be forever grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have John Campanella.
Thank you, John Campanella, member of the public.
Former Planning Commissioner.
Former Planning Commissioner, currently a member of the public. I just want to thank the City Council Mayor Rouse and the City Council Planning Commissioners and staff for putting on this wonderful thank you, if you will, and honoring those who've served on the Planning Commission, and also those who had the foresight way back when to put a Planning Commission together to guide us. And evidently, their thought process really worked well, because here we are today, actually enforcing, supporting, and giving our consultation, just as was envisioned back when it originally started. I was honored to serve eight years, and I heartily suggest that not only for Planning Commission, but anyone who has an interest in public service, to volunteer for the other advisory groups as well. I think it's a great experience, and you'll be surprised how much you'll learn, not only about what's going on in the city, but also how to work with a fellow team and committee that you're on. Last thing I want to say, it was always amazing giving staff, County Council, City Council to us, and the support that they gave us, because no matter how you prepared, when you sat up there and you heard the applicant's presentation, staff presentation, and then comments by your other Commissioners, you had to reset, because your idea of what you might say or how you might say it, a lot of times completely changed it. And that's really the benefit of this process, is listening to everyone, evaluating it, and then trying to come up with the best decision that you can. Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us today.
Mrs. Barza, do we have any other speakers? Thank you, Chair Bonderson. We do have one more speaker for Tomas Costello. Mr. Costello, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Good afternoon. My name is Tomas Costello. We served on the Planning Commission back in 1972, which is a long time ago, together with Sheila. And during that time, we worked on projects such as the creation of the Impacts of Growth Report to allow us some guidance for the, for the limitation of the population with the resources, and also the rebirth of the Zoning Information Report that had continued for pretty much almost 50 years. Along that period of time, a group of us committee members purchased a building of Coleman Construction and turned it into a community service center, which has already celebrated its 50th anniversary. And in recognition of that, we're having an opening house event over the weekend, on Saturday, and we reconditioned the building. It was very, very poor conditions with a 100-year-old sewer system, and we just wanted to give the recognition to the rebirth of the entity and hope that the community will be inspired to support it and continue with all the parties and kings and heras and all the events that we hope to be conducted there. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here with us today.[1026.13][1026.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. I do not have any more speaker slips, so unless there is anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on the ceremonial item today.
Last call. We have so many former Planning Commissioners out there, I'm going to let you off the hook here. Anyone want to speak? Did you do all your speaking when you were up on the dais? Ooh, here we go.[1053.08][1053.08](APPLAUSE). A man who does not need a speaker slip?
You may want to hold your applause. Jay Higgins, it feels like a lifetime ago that I was serving, just, actually just 10 months ago, but I enjoy reading about you in the paper, and I wanted to give a shout out to Josh Molina for his coverage. I don't know how accurate it is, but it's always fun to read. And I wish you the best as you continue to struggle with hotel projects, for example. Don't put your light on.[1089.13][1089.13](LAUGHTER). Not talking about something that's not on the agenda. And I wish you the best as you continue to, I've said before, and you've heard me say this, this is not the Do Nothing Commission or the Preservation Commission. You're a Planning Commissioner, so there's some, some growth and development and change in the future, and I think you're doing a great job. And I just hope you continue to work with applicants to meet our housing needs as best you can, and continue to inch those buildings up in the air and squeeze those applicants on parking the best you can. So thank you very much.[1124.24][1124.24](APPLAUSE).
Well, we, we always enjoy, we always enjoy having Planning, former Planning Commissioners, you know, speak up, and I have to say, with John Campanella's presentation a few moments ago, he's always recruiting for Planning Commission, so I just want to say, if anyone's interested, please come with a sense of humor. We're missing that these days. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. And we have another speaker at our podium. Would you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Eleanor Langer, representing the 1980s.[1162.08][1162.08](LAUGHTER).
Former Planning Commissioner?
And it was a memorable time. I do recall that my first appeal taken from, first time representing the Planning Commission before City Council, we were appealing the approval of the development plan on the Wilcox property, so that one of the great landmarks for my tenure at least was preservation of that precious open space for us. Another major undertaking, of course, of the 1980s was Paseo Nuevo. And all I can say about that is that we didn't approve it for a 30-year life. So it is just symptomatic of the fact that life is unpredictable, and one of the things that made the Planning Commission and City Council and serving in city government as a professional or as a volunteer is that you don't know what's coming next. So it's a wonderful challenge.
Certainly is.
And thank you for the opportunity to have participated in it.
Thank you so much for being here today. What a treat.[1234.11][1234.11](APPLAUSE). So our last call is now a double last call. Are there any other interested speakers? I see, I could call on you and put you on the spot, but I'm not going to do it. Last chance. Okay, well, shall we go ahead?
Thank you, Chair Bonderson. Just to close out, we do not have any virtual participants, and we did not receive any correspondence, so back to the Commission.
All right. Well, with that, I will close public comment, and I'm going to take a moment to, on behalf of the present Planning Commission up here on the dais, I want to thank all of those Commissioners who came before us, not only those who spoke today, but all of you in the room, all of those who can't be here with us today. You're the ones who paved the way to make the Planning Commission what it is today. For us to be able to be up here and follow in your footsteps and maintain some of those positive decisions, those legacies, learn from you, and thank you for that commitment you made of service and contribution to our community. And I would like to also use this opportunity to thank the council members in the room, Mr. Mayor. There are several, even one that was a Planning Commissioner, we have to acknowledge. It's so important for all of us to know that Planning Commission works hand in hand with council, and we appreciate having you here today to support this very special occasion. And to wrap up, I want to ask if any of my fellow Commissioners on the dais would like to say any words to follow up with the former Commissioners? All right. Please go ahead.
I'm the newie here. This is my first year on the Commission. I do want to thank the council and the mayor for appointing me. And, you know, I've learned so much that you're actually, not only got appointed, they took a chance and gave me the opportunity. I have to say that everybody's so accessible in this city. The council members have met with me individually. My Commissioners have helped me. Former Commissioners have reached out to me, and staff has been wonderful, from the city clerk's office to our staff here today, the city attorney's office, to our planning staff. And so I've learned so much about the city, not only the city, but also about, about land use. I came with a technical background because I was on a former Planning Commission, but just to learn this city, this special city, it's just been wonderful, and it's been a pleasure to serve, and I plan to continue to do so, I think. And I also dressed up today for Councilmember Jordan, for your benefit, I am dressed up today.[1415.11][1415.11](LAUGHTER).
For all of our benefits.
Because as you said, I'm on probation. This is my first year on the Commission. And I just want to thank all the former Commissioners for, when we get reports in front of us, I still see the names. And so we do know what you are up to and what you've done, and it helps us as we go forward. So I want to just thank everybody today, and such a privilege for me to be here, being so new to the city.
Thank you. And I don't see any other lights on. Last chance. All right. Well, it's been my greatest honor to work in the capacity of a Planning Commissioner to help assure that all land use decisions, including individual projects, are consistent with the policies and plans adopted by the city of Santa Barbara. I believe it's our collective job to stay neutral and review a project as objectively as possible, to advocate for the best interests of all community members regarding land use and development policies and projects. It's also been a learning experience, as we've heard from a few of our speakers here today, and as I'm sure it is for each one of the Commissioners and present and past that go through this experience, it's, it's almost like a four-year degree. You know, you go to university and you come out learning something, and that's the same as a four-year term up here. So I just have to say that it's been, it's been a wonderful, wonderful, growing curve, steep, but definitely rewarding. And through developing a deep understanding of our governing policies while also listening to the public feedback, we are certainly tasked with making objective decisions within our purview. That's been a hot topic lately. We have a purview, and we're really tasked in paying attention to those limits while being thoughtful and fair and keeping ourselves, holding ourselves to the highest standards. As you all know, to keep any community vital and relevant, governing bodies like the Planning Commission have to evolve with the ever-changing world and not get stuck in longstanding policies and practices that may no longer support a vibrant, diverse, resilient future. The Planning Commission helps shape that growth and maintain quality of life in the city that they serve. And we, as Planning Commissioners, are entrusted to help set land use schools, evaluate individual project proposals, and to ensure consistency with the city's adopted plans. Almost every decision that the Commission makes must strike a balance between private benefit and overall public good. And each project application has been a challenge in one way or another, and I strive to follow role model Commissioners who've come before me in recent years. With the City Council's weekly agenda focused on the widest array of issues, the Planning Commission is uniquely skilled at and positioned to take on the city's most complex land use decisions. In the months ahead, I hope that the Planning Commission's purview can be expanded to allow faster decision-making and truly support an increase in multi-unit housing projects that can only be realized through incentivized policy and processes. Serving as a city, serving as a Planning Commissioner for the city of Santa Barbara these past four years has been one of the most important, most rewarding commitments for me, and in the end, we are all in this together. We need to help support long-term city goals and needs that include alignment with and support from the community at large. I will be forever grateful to live in a place that encourages participation in the public process. It has been an honor. I am so grateful to be able to sit here before you today, welcome you, and thank you all for being here. Now, before closing today's special ceremonial event, I'd like to make a couple of quick announcements. First and foremost, please don't leave. We will have a small reception right here in, right behind those doors, so don't, don't go anywhere. Please stay and enjoy. And as soon as we adjourn this event, I'd like to invite all past Planning Commissioners up to the dais for a group photo, so please don't run too far. I also want to remind everyone that our next PC hearing is tentatively scheduled for October 5th, 2023. And with that, I conclude our September 28, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, and we adjourn at 1:47 PM. Thank you all for being here, and here's to the next 100 years. Thank you.[1699.15][1699.15](APPLAUSE).
Madam Chairman, I am Mary Louise Days, Mary Lou. I think I'm the senior. I know I'm the senior staff person, former staff person here because I don't think anyone else was here before 1961. But could we have a group photo of the former and retired staff?
Absolutely. We certainly can.
After your group photo.
Just stay nearby, and as soon as we clear the dais, we will welcome the next group who would like to take a photo. And again, I just want to point you all to the back of the room.